Welcome all to the June 15 Shelter Rowan Planning Board Meeting. As we always start out, the first thing is to move minutes from our previous meeting, which was on May 9. I know we had some correspondence to new applications from McCann and Carpe. Actually, that's when we received them. Correspondence regarding the Bloom Minor Subdivision, 169 Ram Island Drive Wetland Application, and the White Continuing Bond Extension. We paid one invoice for EHA, and we extended the White Bond Resolution for 45 days. First thing, we have three invoices to pay. Oh, this month's correspondence. Anyone have any changes for this?
I think the motion is accepted.
We have a second?
Yep, right here.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have correspondence this month regarding the White Bond Extension, the Scudder Dock Application, 10 Ram Island Road Subdivision, Weinstein Healy Hensley Wetlands Application, and 59 Nostrand Parkway, which we're going to be talking about later today, SH-29 Westneck Extension Request, letters from the Shelter Rowan Property Owner Corporation, Flowers, the Murphys, and the CAC Memos. There's a full list on the agenda if anyone would like it. We have three invoices to pay. The first is for the Times Media Group for $84, and that had to do with the three public hearing announcements we posted. Something we have to do, so I make a motion to accept the Times Review Legal Notice for $84. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Second invoice is for EHA in the amount of $2,418.75. Most of the work was done on preparing extension resolutions for the White Wetlands Notice Resolutions, and conversations regarding the wetlands procedure and the planning board. And I think this is eight hours, 8.6 hours. I think it's money well worth spent. So I make a motion to accept EHA's invoice in the amount of $2,418.75.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one is from Academy Printing. We had some stamps and signage made up.
These are just for the stamps.
This is just for the stamps?
Yeah.
Okay, so the two stamps we use for signing authorization of resolutions, it's $108.40. It's something we need, so I make a motion to accept the Academy Printing invoice for $108.40. All in favor?
Aye.
Second? Second, all in favor? We have two extensions today. First is for SH-29 Westneck. This will be number 14 of 2023. And we've been, this is the third time we're extending this. They had their appointment with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services Order Review on April 20. They've yet to hear a determination. This is part of their procedure in turning over the property to the Suffolk County Water Authority as part of the sterilization of the lot. And I think we all know how slow the Health Department is, so I make a motion to accept the extension of the lot line adjustment of SH-29 Westneck LLC. Do I have a second?
Second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second resolution is for the Nelson White Estate. This is ongoing for their performance bond. They're currently in building the road that they were required to put in. They've got the drainage in and the road base. They still have to do some curbing, topping gravel, signage, plantings, and monument installations, and they need additional time on it. And so we've been trying to help them along, so I think we extend this. This will be number 15 of 2023. Does anyone have any questions on this one?
What I heard most recently is like they're working, coordinating with the town and it gets all straight, so it seems like it's all moving.
Yeah, I received a note from Gooding, I have here, I think. And he said that we know the town is responsible for building the parking area. They have to clear it, put in the substrate, put in the topping stone. And they plan to start, I guess, in a week or so. He's just waiting to coordinate with Brian Sherman.
Yeah.
And I guess it doesn't make sense for the Whites to put in their topping stone until these guys are all done, so I think this extension is acceptable. So I make a motion to accept the resolution number 15 of 2023.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Christina, can I ask you to read the notice for the Emmett and Lindsay McCann Wetlands Application at 12 Westmoreland Drive?
A public hearing regarding an application for a wetlands permit by Emmett and Lindsay McCann. The property which is the subject of the application is located at 12 Westmoreland Drive, Shelter Rowan, New York. Applicant is seeking to remove an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new five-bedroom dwelling. Existing cabana to remain, existing swimming pool to remain, remove an existing secret class type 2. No correspondence received.
Thank you. We do have a Conservation Advisory Council report on it. It go, oh, this is Carpe. So they asked that the house be moved 10 feet closer to Westmoreland Drive to avoid construction in the adjacent regulated area. They require insulation drywells for the pool if one doesn't exist. And note that Matt Sherman may have some information on that. And they want signage in front of the house, so numbering, so the fire department knows where they are located. So Matt, you're the asking on this project?
Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering and Consulting. I'm here with the property owner, Lindsay McCann, and her architect, Simon Isinger. I'm going to give you a real quick, quick presentation on the project, then if you have any questions for me or for Lindsay or Simon, I'll be more than happy to answer those. As mentioned in the notice and with the CAC, the CAC report, this is a small piece of property, just about a one-acre piece of property in Westmoreland. Westneck Bay is to the northwest. Westmoreland Drive is to the southeast. It's a currently developed property. There's a small, one-story ranch building on the property now, and it's situated approximately in the middle of the property. The, this is just a blow-up of the survey. I'm going to give you a lay of the land here. You've got a one-story building right here, again, Westneck Bay to the left, Westmoreland Drive to the right. There is also a swimming pool here and a, what we're calling a pool cabana. It's non-living space. There's no sanitary structures inside the building. It's for the convenience of the swimming pool, for some little bit of shade and shelter, and there's also some storage. There's an outdoor shower on the side of that, that pool cabana. The proposed site, zoom in on this guy, make it easier to see. Okay, the, on this drawing, you can see there's a light gray line in here. That's the existing house. There's a darker green line. That darker green line is the proposed house. So the waterfront line here, 91.5 feet from the wetlands, that's the same existing wall of the existing house. The wall of the proposed house will be in the same location. The existing house also gets a little bit closer to the wetlands up here in this corner, about 90 feet from the wetlands. That's going to be removed. So the, the portion of the building that's within the regulated area is actually going to decrease a little bit. Not by a lot, but it does decrease a little bit. We're also removing stoop and some stairs from the regulated area. That's the stuff right in this area here. On this drawing, we've got drywell shown coming down from the different roof leaders. I was able to get all of them 100 feet from the wetlands boundary, with the exception of this one here, which is between the house and the 75-foot setback. The sanitary system being here on this side of the building down here, and the run we would have to make to the other side to get that stormwater, it just wasn't practical to get the stormwater out of that area. The existing sanitary system is just an old cesspool, just over 45 feet from the wetlands boundary. We're going to be getting rid of that. Ideally, I would just like to abandon it in place rather than take it out. So pump it clean, backfill it with some clean sand and gravel, and be done with it. The new IA sanitary system is going to be here between the house and the property line. The well is up here in the, in that north or east, easterlymost property corner. So that gives us our minimum separation distance that was required by the Health Department to get away from the, to get away from the sanitary systems. And actually, on this one, it looks like it's obscured by the Zoom screen. But right where John Evans is, that's where the well is.
You can move that.
Was that? That's not on my screen.
I didn't want.
That's on yours.
Yes.
That's all good. Okay, so the proposed building plans, this is the basement plan, a mechanical room, a game room, an exercise area, and some storage. There's going to be a bathroom, full bathroom, on the basement level. On the first floor, we've got a typical layout, full kitchen, dining room, living room, a garage. There's a guest bedroom on the first floor and a study or a home office on the first floor as well. Then on the second floor balcony and four bedrooms, primary or master bedroom, stair hall, and then these three bedrooms on the right-hand side of your screen. Some architectural views of the exterior of the building. It's going to be a flat roof. The flat roof is, you're at 23, 24 feet basically above existing average grade. Town code says we can be up to 25 feet, so we're just below that from existing average grade. The finished floor elevation of the house and of the pool, the pool deck, is at about an 18-foot elevation. Groundwater in this area is at a two-foot elevation, so we've got 16 feet from the pool to groundwater. We don't have any issues with having to de-water or impacting groundwater in any way, shape, or form with this project. Side elevations, this building here on the right-hand side, that's the pool cabana I was talking about before. This is the pool deck and pool patio leading over here to the main house. That's the project in a nutshell. If you've got any questions for me, if you've got any questions for the owner or her designer, we'd be more than happy to answer anything.
Matt, you received Joe's memo, right?
I have not seen Joe's memo, no.
Okay. One thing, he said there was a discrepancy between your square footages for the house and the architect's. Were you able to come up with some?
I don't have the, I don't have anything addressing that at this point, but I can get it to the board. I know we had some minor changes in the way that we were calculating the square foot living area, whereas I was going to the inside of the wall, and I believe Simon was going to the outside or the middle of the wall, so that would be one discrepancy. I know there was some issues, and it's typical with these applications, where the Health Department numbers are going to be slightly different than the town numbers because they're counting different square foot areas, but I can, I can tabulate that for the board and get that to you before the work session.
I think the differences were 30 to 50, 40. 410 square feet, that may be the additional six-inch envelope all the way around. That may be on two.
Yeah, it's a little under 10%.
Sounds like, sounds like what it could be.
It's technical.
I noticed the electrical, when we were on the site, I noticed electrical service is spanning right across the bluff, the edge of the property. Is there any thought or intention to burying that? I don't know, because if.
Yeah, it's right here along the water's edge.
Yeah.
Right there. Those two lines there, I mean, it's hard to see with this, on this screen, but those two lines for people who.
You can see it personally.
It's not sightly, but it's also not safe to some degree, and.
Is that something you?
Yes. We're actively going to, we've worked, we've tried to coordinate that project in the past with the power company and the neighbors. It's a little complicated because we have to get.
It's serving several properties.
Yes, exactly. But we're going to be giving it, and we have talked, we've got buy-in from four to five neighbors, and we're attempting to do that part of this project.
And for the record, that was Lindsay McCann.
I think, and just for the record, when someone speaks, I'm just going to ask them to come up to the podium because that's where the microphone is, just going forth. Should that be part of this wetlands application?
I don't know if utilities do, don't need to be, I mean, we can, we can bring it in, absolutely, but I don't believe utilities.
I don't think you can require that because I don't, you can't control PSE and G and what they do.
Okay, it was just a question I had and wanted to include it if it was a, something.
It's very difficult to get them to maintain those wires, like when they're serving more people, you know, it's amazing.
I had a neutral drop at my house three weeks ago. I know all about it. Yeah. The slope is pretty gradual towards the water, and then it has a vegetated bluff going down.
Yes.
Is there some consideration of adding additional plantings to, along the bluff? Right now, it's just grass to the top of the bluff.
I'll toss that to Simon. Simon, if you want to come on.
Simon Isinger, the architect of the project. Yeah, there definitely is. So the 75-foot vegetated buffer is currently all grass, but our intention is to bring that. We believe that there is a planting plan, which is not part of this, because we didn't, that was required part of this. But we do have a planting plan, which is bringing the vegetation up to the 75%. It's at the 75-foot vegetated buffer, not all of it. So some of that remains grass, but we're going to bring that. I believe we're showing it 15 feet inland of the bluff.
Okay. The one thing, and I want to, allows me to segue quickly, I know we're in a public hearing, but it may help these guys out too. I have put in bluffs, vegetative buffers on my projects, and I've found when they're fairly steep and the people come in and rip out all the existing turf and then put down, so now they loosen up the dirt, they put a few random plantings in, cover it with mulch, and all of a sudden, I'm seeing all this mulch go flying into the bays and all this dirt. I would prefer some consideration that if you're putting plants in, you don't rip it all out at once, and you just put the plants in, let them establish as they, they go along.
Yeah.
Maybe bayberries or something, or whatever's on the, on the list that you can put in, low blueberries and something that doesn't really tear apart the, as we make the transition, tear the whole thing apart.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. And certainly, on the bluff itself, we're not planning to take anything out that's currently natural.
And it's fairly well vegetated too, and so on. Okay. Any of you guys have any questions?
Looks good, looks.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions?
Matt, I just wanted to check, because you didn't, you didn't mention it, but it was in the application about, about the five-gallon pump.
Yeah.
Water conservation, that's definitely going to happen.
Yes, all of these properties in this type of environment where we know we've got shallow groundwater, we've got fragile groundwater, we're using, recommending five-gallon permanent pumps on it, and that's the town board and the wetlands process has been doing that for a while, so we would continue that with this.
And you're taking out the entire asphalt driveway and putting in only ground?
Yes.
Great.
Anyone on Zoom wants, would like to speak about this?
Pam Demars.
Okay, if there are no ones speaking, oh, sorry.
Pam Demars.
Hi, Pam.
Hi there, good evening. I really just have like two questions about this project. One, the cabana, is there a permit for that? Do they have a CEO for that building? And does it need one? Because it wasn't on the original site plan, and now it's on the new survey, it's showing there, so I don't know. That was a question that came up in the denial letter. And the other question I have is that this site is located adjacent or, or within an area designated as sensitive for an archaeological historic preservation office from the state of New York. And I'm wondering, have you heard from them in coordination with this application?
I can handle that. Yes, the, the pool cabana was built two years ago, I believe it was, and there is, they were building permits issued for it and received, and CEOs for that at the time. We had a, we received a letter of non-jurisdiction from the DEC for this property years ago, and that letter of non-jurisdiction is still valid. And if this project or any work at this property were to be kicked over to Historic Preservation, or if we needed to do an archaeological assessment for the site, that's where, that would have triggered that review, and that's where that would have been referred. So that would have been through the DEC when that letter of non-jurisdiction was first applied for.
Okay. Thank you. So.
Trying to say that, that you don't require a letter from them for that, just because the DEC doesn't have any jurisdiction. It seems to me that the Historic Preservation Office still has jurisdiction and could still weigh in on this project. That's really my question.
I can recommend you contacting them and see if they want to have any jurisdiction on this project, but we've contacted the DEC, they said they don't, so.
So I, I think we can close this hearing if you are all in agreement.
Just about the vegetated plan, you, you guys are going to turn that in?
Yes. If we get to the vegetation plan, it will also get you the comparison of the square foot living and square foot notch.
Sounds great.
Great.
Okay, so then I will close this public hearing. The next public hearing.
I'm sorry, open subject received, right?
Open subject to, thank you, thank you.
And the vegetation plan, yeah.
So the next public hearing is for the Martin and Julianne Carpe Wetlands Application at 9B Pecanic Avenue. Can I ask you to please read the public hearing?
A public hearing regarding an application for a wetlands permit by Martin and Julianne Carpe. The property which is the subject of the application is located at 9B Pecanic Avenue, Shelter Rowan, New York. The applicants are requesting a wetlands permit for a first-floor renovation, addition of 122 square feet to the first floor, addition of 204 square feet to the existing garage, to construct a new 130 square feet covered front porch, and for the addition of a new 1,340 square feet second floor consisting of three bedrooms, three full baths, and a common area, all within wetlands regulated area, secret class type 2. No correspondence received.
Okay. We do have a memo from the CAC, Conservation Advisory Council, and they note that the house was built prior to the adoption of the Wetlands Code. They state that no footprint expansion shall be allowed in the 75 vegetative buffer, quoting section 12, 129-2. I'll just note that's something that we, we recognize too. They suggest that the expansion only be allowed upwards. They would like the silt fencing, the cisterns, the drywells to be shown on the plan. They would like a vegetative, vegetation plan submitted, and they note, the last point, that the DEC permit expired in 2021. But I'll just say as a side on that, I went online for the meeting. There is a letter of no jurisdiction that does not have an expiration date, and it's based on the, all work being above the 10-foot elevation contour. I think the permit was primarily for the sanitary system upgrade, already been upgraded to an IA system, and for permitting of the patio with the fire pit, which had been built prior to getting permits for. So they've had no problem with either of those, and so that the issue of the expired permit was really a, is a fairly moot point. Mrs. Carpe?
Actually, Carpe, I'm representing myself, as is my son, Quinn. It's nice to see you.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate that. We'd like to just start off by apologizing to the committee. We realize the application includes plans that are not the latest architecturals and would like to request adjournment so we can update the application if that would satisfy the committee.
That is fine with me. We were going to suggest that similarly with the idea of what we have and was in front of us is not something we can really approve, and wanted to give the idea to come back. There are some other points that you will need to map, and I will put a kind of an email together, a quick summary for you, and maybe you can get that on updated site plan and various other items.
But just, just move forward with the CAC, CAC's recommendation. We cannot turn the garage around. Right, they're saying that we have to, we can't go out of the footprint.
You cannot get out of your footprint. You cannot expand the footprint.
And is the porch considered footprint?
The roofed porch would be an expansion.
Expansion.
Yes. You also have a stepping patio outside the living room door, but no materials are described. We don't know if it's permeable or meant to be solid, so if you wanted to present some idea of materials.
You mean on the front door when you come, when you come into the property?
The living room door going off towards the sanitary system in that direction.
Okay, okay. Are you allowed to have steps of the down off the door?
Yes, you are. That's a safety issue, yeah. It looked like a patio to us.
No, it was just steps. Okay, we'll just have to clarify that.
Okay.
So moving forward, we just have to resubmit that.
Resubmit that, correct.
Okay.
There were a few other points that I'll throw them out now. You're required to have drywells, none of that was located. You sound like you're keeping and possibly even expanding the asphalt driveway a little bit?
No, no, we're going to take the asphalt up.
And put a.
A downstone.
Permeable driveway.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, so the, for the improvements would be the AI system.
Yeah.
The asphalt. And we got our well, our well is not on the property.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood. We did see some sprinkler heads around the foundation. I don't know if those are abandoned.
They're abandoned.
Then maybe we should just have them removed.
Okay.
We would like to see some kind of vegetation plan.
Okay.
To create a buffer like, like I described for McCann.
Okay.
Around the perimeter. Some materials would be helpful for, you know. Some materials would be helpful for, you know, type of gravel, maybe for the driveway, what this stoop and patio is gonna be potentially made out of. One question we had was whether or not the foundation, you're gonna keep the foundation in this work?
Yes.
Just asked that you have an engineer look at it because we don't wanna authorize this and have you to come back if, when you kind of claim that the foundation's not reusable.
Okay.
And a very minor thing, on the drawings, it says use of straw, steel fencing and straw bales. We don't do that here on Shelter Island, we just use wireback seal fencing. Straw can actually contaminate the wetlands and so we don't like its use.
And a parking plan?
Oh yeah, and a parking plan so we do not block access to. So where during construction where the vehicles are gonna park and materials are being stored, just kind of coordinating that's gonna be. I'll put that, summarize in the email.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the Carpe hearing is adjourned.
Hi, sir, would you like to make the comment?
Sure.
My name is Delaney Foster Jr., Duke is my nickname. I have been the next door neighbor to this property for 55 years. I have known the Carpes for 13 years and been their neighbor. They are outstanding people who have helped myself in medical emergencies since Julie is a nurse and her husband is a doctor. They have been very, very good neighbors to us and have become good friends. We fully endorse their plans and we hope that you will approve.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. Okay. We have one more public hearing for which I must recuse myself.
A public hearing regarding an application.
So this next, Anne's gotta leave because he's the architect for this project. So this is 7 Chequid Avenue, this is the road that goes down to the yacht club, it's the last house on the left. Christina, can you read the notice?
Public hearing regarding an application for a wetlands permit by Chequid Avenue LLC. The property, which is the subject of the application, is located at 7 Chequid Avenue, Shelter Island, New York. The applicants are requesting a wetlands permit to allow 448 square feet of a new 2,287 square feet accessory sleeping structure to extend into adjacent regulated area on a bulkhead property, secret class type two. There was correspondence received from the Heights Property Owners Corporation opposing the application. To this letter, there were also letters from 1 Chequid, 3 Chequid, 4 Chequid, 5 Chequid Avenue, and 16 Clinton Avenue opposing the application. In addition to that, we had, we had a letter from Scott Murphy, 8 Chequid Avenue, endorsing the application, and also a letter of support was received from Flowers at 10 Chequid Avenue. They're just asking for consideration of the size of the accessory structure. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna read the CAC's report. It said, "No accessory apartment may be constructed in the nearshore overlay district. The applicant should submit their permit for the irrigation system. The committee wants proof of federal flood zone status. Lori Raymond advised that the property is in a female load flood zone AE. The committee wants a test well in the area of construction. There is to be no de-watering from any construction. The committee voted to deny this application based on its location in the nearshore overlay district." Vote was 6-0.
Good evening, Matt Sherman again with Sherman Engineering and Consulting. I'm here with Debbie Shepherd, the property owner. We are presenting this application. It's a construction of an accessory sleeping structure in the Heights, in the nearshore overlay district. As with the previous application, I've got a fairly quick PowerPoint presentation to go through. Here. Okay. So this is the property at 7 Chequid Avenue. What we're looking at here is on the top of your page, Shelter Island Sound. To the bottom of your page is Chequid Avenue. The Heights has a vacant property to the right-hand side, and then there's a developed property to the left-hand side. The existing house on site is right here. You've got a garage driveway coming in. There's a patio and swimming pool in the middle of the property. And what we're asking for a wetlands permit for now is the proposed two-story accessory quarters or accessory building that would be on the westerly side of the existing concrete pool. The wetlands boundary is, was located by Pecanic surveyors and it's this thick red line here along the top of your page. That was done October 2022, so it's a relatively new location for the wetlands boundary. There's a bulkhead on site which runs the length of the property, extends on either side. And then your 75-foot setback from your wetlands line is this line right here. Runs C-word of the proposed building, C-word of the swimming pool, kind of cuts into the first little bit of the house. Excuse me, the side yard setback for this property for a two-story accessory building or an accessory building with living structure, living quarters in it, excuse me, is 20 feet. That's this line right here. So we're up against that 20-foot side yard setback. The front yard setback in this zone is 40 feet and that's this line right along here. So the pre-existing garage is non-conforming to the zoning setback. However, the proposed work, what we're looking to do, is conforming to the zoning setback. This is a diagram showing you how the proposed building would sit in relation to the other buildings around it. So this is the proposed accessory building. This is the Shepherd's existing house. And this is the house that's adjacent to the west. So it shows just how those are in relation to one another. This building here that we're asking for approval on is 27 feet 6 inches above average existing grade. The one that was actually applied for was 28 feet 6 inches. We were able to bring it down a foot by redesigning some of the foundation structure because of the flood zone requirement, an AE8 flood zone requires we elevate things to a certain elevation. Support structure, we were able to adjust that to shave a foot off of the top of this building. This is another one looking at it from if you were inside the Shepherd's property, sitting on the far side of the swimming pool, looking toward the proposed accessory building. That's the view you would be looking at. This is if you're looking at it from the water. So the Shepherd's main house on the right-hand side, the accessory building in the middle, and then the residence on the, to the right. These are the floor plans, the proposed floor plans for the building. The first floor is on the right-hand side. On the water side, we've got a covered porch, then a great room, a kitchenette, entry, and a half bath. On the second floor, we've got two bedrooms, one on either end. Master bedroom to the water side and a bedroom to the roadside. There's a shared bathroom for that bedroom and the den office room that's in between those two bedrooms. The elevations of the house, again, there's that 27 feet 6 inch from existing average grade. We are bringing the grade up at the house a little bit so that we can bring the stairs down to meet grade at a little bit of a higher elevation. So that grade comes up a little bit from existing average grade. As it is currently designed, we've got four feet from existing grade to the floor level, the finished floor level of the proposed building. So here's our elevations, showing south elevation, so from the road, east elevation from inside the property. And then the north elevation, which would be from the water side, and the west, which would be from that adjacent neighbor's point of view. And this is a comparison, a lot of the opposition to this project has had to do with the size of this building. It's an accessory building, it's an accessory sleeping building. It is a large accessory sleeping building, there's no getting around that. We're at 2,274 square feet for this accessory, accessory living structure. So one of the things that everyone has been talking about is how big it is and how it's not going to fit in with the immediate area. It is going to be larger, the combination of the existing house and the proposed building will be larger than the other neighboring properties. But the property that it's on is significantly larger than the other neighboring properties. So what we've looked at is in order to try and compare apples to apples, let's look at it all on a per acre vantage point. So as you go down through, 1 Chequid, six-bedroom house, it's 4,286 square feet on a half an acre. So if we're looking at it on a per acre standpoint, you're at 8,572 square feet per acre. And we can run down the list through all of these different properties. One of the key things that I take away from this is that you've got, including our proposal, you've got three properties on Chequid Avenue with six bedrooms. You've got two properties with five bedrooms, two properties with three, and one property with four. So this accessory building, it's adding bedrooms, it's not adding bedrooms, that's moving it out of character of the neighborhood. It's adding size. It's at, on a per acre standpoint, it's at 6,139 square feet. The properties in the area range from 5754 up to 25,767 square foot living area per acre. So this proposal at 6139 is not blowing the doors off of the square foot living area per acre of the general, the general area. And one of the things that on this project, it has gained a lot of attention and a lot of pushback from some of the neighbors. And I don't normally do this, but one of the things that came in, and the Heights was kind enough to send me their letter of opposition to the project. I got it yesterday morning and I started going through it. And Lori Raymond, who knows the town code as well as anybody, and she's got an eye for detail and nuance like anybody I've ever seen. So when she crafted this letter, when she wrote this letter, we take it very seriously. And I started looking at it and I wouldn't normally put it into my presentation, but there's a lot of things in here that I think can be misleading or it can be misinterpreted. So what I wanted to do was go through her letter point by point and show where I take exception to it. The first point says that the proposal clearly contradicts the wetland code, which seeks to preserve, protect, and maintain the wetlands. It says the proposal encroaches 22 and a half feet into the critical vegetative buffer. The problem is that when you look at the town code's definition, they've got two different areas that they're defining as far as the buffer area around the wetlands. The first is the adjacent regulated area. Everything outside of the 75-foot vegetative buffer but within 100 feet. So from 75 feet to 100 feet, that's the adjacent regulated area. The area from 0 feet to 75 feet is the vegetative buffer. So in her letter where Lori says that we're 22 and a half feet into the critical vegetative buffer, that's saying we're 22 and a half feet into the 75-foot setback. We're clearly not, we're outside of the 75-foot setback. There is, we're not even close. So that's an incorrect statement. We go on to the next point. It says the proposal also doesn't adhere to the town's adopted comprehensive plan, which discusses preventing the degradation of surface water resources and the wetlands ecosystem. The adjacent regulated area is key to protecting those protections. So this proposal, which is in the adjacent regulated area, and Lori's exactly right. The vegetative buffer in the adjacent regulated area are key to protecting the wetlands. In this area, we're removing over 1,500 feet of turf grass to make room for the building. We're putting in stormwater drywells, which are going to result in groundwater recharge to the area. The site also has a bulkhead, it also has a very well-established vegetative buffer. So all of those things are in play to help protect the wetlands that are adjacent to this site. Next thing is the proposal is characterized as, in quotes, accessory sleeping quarters. It is large, it's larger than what most people would consider a cottage or accessory sleeping quarter building to be. However, the town code, where she says here it has a full eat-in kitchen, again, the town code has a definition. And it stands for an accessory apartment, kitchen facilities have a stove plus either both a refrigerator or, and a sink. We don't have a stove, this can't be classified as an accessory apartment. It's in the town code. The next, exception to town code should only be approved when there is a hardship or no practical alternative. There is no hardship in this proposal and there are practical alternatives such as building a smaller structure. Again, she's exactly right. Exceptions of town code should only be approved when there's a hardship and no alternative. The issue is there's no exception to the town code here. The town code, chapter 129, which is for wetlands, says, "A permit is required in various different circumstances. On a site like this, a new structure on a lot with or without a bulkhead, new construction less than 100 square feet within the vegetative buffer, no permit required. Within the adjacent vegetative buffer, the adjacent regulated area, no permit required. Other new construction, which is what this building qualifies as, within the vegetative buffer, you're not allowed to do it. We would be asking for an exemption to the code if we were within the vegetative buffer. Within the adjacent vegetative buffer, the adjacent regulated area, PR means there's a permit required." It doesn't say you can't have a permit, you need to get an exception, you have to get a variance. It says you just have to apply for a wetlands permit. That's what we're doing. So a permit is applicable in this situation according to the town code. Next one, FEMA, this is flooding in this area is clearly a concern. We are in a flood zone, an AE8 flood zone, that's absolutely right. The CAC had asked for a clarification or confirmation of that. This is an excerpt of the FEMA flood zone map, AE8. And I've got a little arrow pointing in there to where our site is. I'll zoom in on it so you can see it. This is our site right here, we're well within that AE8 flood zone. Town code again, just go back to the town code, chapter 6817. "New construction and substantial improvements are allowed within an AE, an AH, zone A, these other flood zones." So the town code says we can build in there. Building code says we have to build a very specific way in order to do so safely. That's all, so we're allowed to do it, we just have to take the proper steps to do it. Next piece, Chequid Avenue LLC is a non-contributing structure to the Heights. With the exception of 7 Chequid, all the other houses on the northern water side of Chequid were built between 1875 and 1890. Again, she's exactly right. However, she's leaving out the other side of the street. And if you're only gonna look at part of the picture, you're only gonna get part of the answer. So on the northerly side of the street, you've got 1875 to 1880. On site and on the southern side of the street, you've got 1930s to 1960s. So to try and show this as only historic buildings in this area is just, it's purely, it's just inaccurate. Next thing, "Existing house has a long history of seasonal rentals. Depending on the outcome of the accessory dwelling unit discussion, the current owners who are rarely at the existing home or their successors could expose the Heights to increased density, traffic congestion, and demands on resources. The proposed ADU discussion within the town is far from complete. The comprehensive plan update will likely determine the direction of that discussion. And however it pans out at the end of the day, the Shepherds and everybody else with an accessory sleeping structure, an accessory apartment, whatever they've got that could be used or considered for an ADU, will have to comply with whatever the town regulations are at that time." As far as congestion, parking and traffic issues, all of the Heights has it. That's, you know, that's just part of the Heights. However, at this site, they actually have plenty of off-street parking. They've got at least four spots, if not more, if they wanna get a little creative. So that's, again, it's a little bit of a red herring. Okay, owners of 7 Chequid are among the Heights' largest residential water consumers of its approximate 175 residential users. In 2021 and 2022, the property was the. In 2021 and 2022, the property was the 25th and 13th largest residential consumer of water, respectively. Massive, quote-unquote, "accessory sleeping quarters" designed to maximize occupancy will only exacerbate water usage and lead to a disproportionate allocation of Heights' resources. From my perspective, this water usage data is being presented in a little bit of a vacuum. We're being told that the Shepherds are the 25th and the 13th largest users in '21 and '22. What were they in the five or 10 years prior to that? What are the rest of the Heights residential property users using? If you're going to put in information out there like that and say that, you know, shame on these guys. They're the 13th and the 25th largest water users. Let's see what other people are using. You know, put the information out there to substantiate that this is actually an accurate representation of what's going on and what has been going on for the past several years and that this isn't just a post-COVID anomaly. "The Heights would like the application to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals with respect to nearshore overlay and District A." One for accessory buildings, not having a kitchen, and the other for the proposed has an extensive kitchen. Well, we've already gone over the fact that it does not have an extensive kitchen. By the town code-owned definition, it doesn't have a kitchen because the town code says it has to have a stove. "Nearshore overlay code was created in 2001. Since that time, Mary Wilson, Lori Raymond, and Reed Karen have reviewed applications with new construction within the 100-foot regulated area, also in the nearshore overlay district. And to my knowledge, at least none of my projects, I can't speak for other consultants, but none of my projects that I'm aware of were referred to the ZBA for any of those, under any of them, whether it was Mary, whether it was Lori, or whether it was Reed." "The building code, also to reiterate again, does not have a kitchen as defined by town code." "The wetlands application written by Joe Lombardi represents the planning board is insufficient. Site details from the application and no analysis of possible or real environmental impact. In addition, the memo deems the wetlands application an SEAF acceptable, whereas there were errors in both documents." "It is a Type 2 action, so an SEAF is not required. That's just by definition." On March 6, the Heights had brought some questions to me about the project, some specifically having to do with the SEAF, saying, "Why didn't we say there was parkland adjacent to the site?" About the Willow Path easement, some other informational in those lines. Our response on the same day was that if they would provide evidence of the easement of Willow Path and that Nine Chiquit had been deemed an official park and wasn't simply a vacant piece of property, that I would gladly update the SEAF form and correct those forms if they could be shown that they needed to be corrected. We never got a response, so I never corrected them. And then lastly, the five of the neighboring Chiquit Avenue neighbors submitted strong letters opposing the project. Absolutely, they did. I can understand why people in the general area would not be happy with a building of this size. But it is, the building does meet town code. It's not too high. It's not too close to the front yard line. It's not too close to the side yard line. It doesn't increase the square foot living area over 6,000 square feet. It doesn't get too close to the wetlands boundary. It complies with town code. As Christina had mentioned, there were letters of support from two of the closest neighbors, both Scott Murphy and from the Flowers. And then I wanted to close it out because I don't want to close on that note. I wanted to close out with a couple of pictures of the site. This is at the beachfront, looking down the bulkhead. As you look down this bulkhead, you can see on the left-hand side, that's the Flowers' house, and that's the vegetative buffer that's on the landward side of the bulkhead. A little bit further down, looking down at the next property up. And again, their bulkhead and their significant vegetation on the bulkhead. Looking back from the opposite direction. It's a neighbor's property. And then that's Willow Path. Comes down from the ferry office and goes all the way down, wraps around toward the yacht club. Just looking at it from the other direction. And really, the main issue of these is we really have nowhere that we could put additional vegetation on this site because of Willow Path. And I wanted to demonstrate that the vegetation that's there now is significant and it's very well established. And then this is looking back into the property toward where the accessory building would be. And then one more picture of the same spot. And that's what I've got. The only other thing I would like to add is just one last point of clarification to the Heights' letter. In the beginning of the letter, they mentioned that the plans submitted on behalf of the applicant, their architect and myself, their engineer, Matt Sherman, the architect is not on the application. He is not a applicant on this project. He was a designer for the property owner, but he is not an applicant. And I think that's important to specify. So that's all I have. If the board has any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Or if, after other people speak, if the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, Matt. Do you have any questions?
We have questions from Matt Sherman.
Let's hear what the audience wants. Can you have anything?
Yeah, typical of the board. Good evening. Lori Edraman. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation. And I don't want to reiterate a lot of the things that Matt's already talked about, but I do want to hit several points. So I'm going to talk about, you know, various areas of the letter that we sent, as well as, we have additional questions regarding the applications that we'd like to address at the end. So while, you know, POC works to collaborate with its members to help them achieve their construction objectives, it is a balance. And that balance is based on preserving the natural resources as well as the Heights' infrastructure and maintaining the Heights' new character, as well as addressing the neighbor's concerns. And as you see from the number of letters that were submitted, there are a lot of neighbor concerns on how this application will affect the area. The plans that submitted, we do recognize the plans were drawn by Ian McDonald, and I guess that is a verbiage thing. But the application was submitted by Matt Sherman. It does depict a very large, two-story accessory structure that is almost the same size as the existing house. We recognize that that's in the town code, but it is under the 6,000 square feet, which is allowable. However, we feel it's excessive in size based on the size of the lot, and that it's right up against the setback line and how it relates to the other structure. Certain drawings were presented here tonight that we haven't seen. So that was interesting. And those drawings aren't posted on the town website either as part of that evaluation. I want to talk about the wetlands. You know, the wetlands code, which does seek to preserve, protect, and maintain the wetlands and the encroachments of the 22.5 feet as well as the 448 street, it was, it is, as Matt says, critical. But it's the regulated town wetlands area. That was a typo on my behalf. Anyway, allowing such encroachment establishes a bad precedent because the whole town wetlands code is to restrict construction within the whole 100 feet with no construction allowed at all within the 75 feet. So this is a very large structure to be bending the rules on, shall we say.
It's not the 75 feet.
No, it's between the 75 and 100. That is correct. Flooding in this area is definitely a concern. And we bring that up because, as the letter we've sent in, the damage to the seawall just from Superstorm Sandy was extensive. And the seawall had to be raised by the 17 inches is what you saw in the photos. And the proposed structure is in a FEMA AE Zone, elevation 8. That's defined as a special hazard area under FEMA regulations. And we feel that the planning board should really not be approving new structures in these areas. It's one thing to approve exemptions and hardships to save existing structures in a FEMA flood zone, which we also have down in that area, which will probably be coming for you at some point. But it's quite another to create a new structure in a FEMA flood zone. So exceptions to the code regarding that 100-foot regulated town area, we don't see a hardship here. And there are practical alternatives. And that is, the applicant could make a smaller structure that would be neither in the zoning setback or in the town wetlands. It's the size of this proposed structure that has created this problem that needs a wetlands permit. You know, the Heights believes that the planning board should deny this exemption from the wetlands because this is an environmentally sensitive area, and it's flood-prone. If anyone has been down there into that area, even just on a normal storm, windy storm, you know, a lot of that area is underwater. The streets are flooded. The properties that are adjacent to it are flooded. So it's an issue. Our wetlands are under siege. And we feel that we should not be pushing the limits on applications within the town regulated areas. The CAC clearly agrees with this because they voted unanimously against this proposed project. Joe's memo, which we did see, thank you, Joe, we felt was insufficient. It cites details from the application, but it offers no analysis of possible or real environmental impacts on the project, even though it acknowledges the project is within the nearshore overlay district. In addition, the memo deemed the wetlands application and the short environmental assessment form is acceptable when there are errors in those documents. So I would encourage you to go back and look through those again to see what those errors are. And I'm happy to talk to us about that if you wish. The comprehensive plan, the adopted version, it's a 1994 version, which we all know. And this proposal, we feel, does not adhere to the town's comprehensive plan, which discusses the degradation of surface water resources as well as the wetlands ecosystem in the adjacent area, which is key to protecting our wetlands. The Chiquit LLC is also a non-contributing structure. It's where the Heights is a historic district. We do have a structure that is the neighbor directly adjacent, the Myers residence, that is directly adjacent to this proposed accessory structure. And that property, that house, as well as this accessory structure, are both right on this top line. So these are going to be very close to each other. And what you, sorry, I have a quote here from the adopted town plan. It says, quote, "To preserve the character of the island, this requires matching the use of the land to the land's natural and visual qualities and protection of critical visual assets, including scenic views from rows and coastal view corridors." That comes right out of the adopted comprehensive plan. That's why we're saying that this application is not in line with the adopted comprehensive plan. Zoning, again, the POC feels that the proposals characterize as accessory sleeping quarters as misleading. In addition to the signs and the plans you saw, it says that there is a kitchen. The drawings are littered with the word "kitchen." If you look at the definition of the word "kitchen" in the New York State Building Code, it says a small, it is a room made for preparation of food. If you look at the town code under Section 133.6, it says, "An accessory building used for sleeping quarters for domestic house guests, members of the family. No accessory building shall have kitchen facilities or shall be used for rental purposes." It goes on and on about other things. But in the nearshore overlay district, it clearly says you can't have a kitchen. So why are the drawings saying "kitchen"? And it says it in multiple places throughout the drawings. So clearly, there's an intention here to put a kitchen in because that's what the drawings call for. So whether Matt calls it an accessory sleeping quarters or not in his application, we feel is misleading. Will it be one of those projects where the kitchen is, or the stove is added later? The code doesn't say you can't have a stove. It says you can't have a kitchen. There's no debate about that. A kitchenette is a small kitchen. Again, that's the definition. It's a small kitchen equipped as a part of a room or a room to prepare food. The drawings also have cottage labeled. If you look at the definition of a cottage, a cottage is a small house. It's non-accessory, and it's not subordinate to another house, to the main house. So again, you have to look at these definitions and what these things mean and the cross-reference them because that is where I think the application shows that there's more intended here. The Heights would like this application to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. The reason for that is because the nearshore overlay district clearly says can't have an accessory apartment with a kitchen. And so does 133.6, that same section, shows another example where a kitchen is simply not allowed. It doesn't say no stove. Other issues, this house has a long history of seasonal rentals. Depending on the outcome of the accessory dwelling unit, again, with the town board members, we don't know where that's going. But, you know, this could expose the Heights to increased density, traffic, congestion, demand, and POC's resources and infrastructure. And at no point has this applicant come to talk to the Heights regarding connections to the Heights' infrastructure. It's not even noted on the site plan of where those connections are going to take place or how. The owners of Seven Chiquit are the largest water users. I can't speak to that. That information came from our data. But they are one of our highest water users. Is it sprinkler system, irrigation system, water being used for the pool, water being used by renters? Since it's a rental property, we don't know how the water's being used. But there are records that show it is a very high-use water property. By creating another accessory structure that may or may not be rented out, you know, it just exasperates that. And lastly, as you know, we've got several letters. I hope you'll take the time to read all of those because they all express not only size issues, but environmental concerns. So that is my closing statements. Questions I have, there are quite a few discrepancies on the drawings. And I'm not sure who to address this to, whether it's Matt or Joe. But the Page A100 says the project is located in a flood zone X. Page 0A3 says the project is located in a VE8. So as stated in my letter, FEMA maps, which are the most current from September 2009, it's an AE Zone, elevation 8. So I just want to be clear that the drawings do not show the correct FEMA flood zone. This is a question for Matt. Elevations and sections are shown. You mentioned grading. The elevations and sections are showing varying 3 feet to 5 feet above grade, which is not consistent with the floodplain destruction requirements in an AE elevation 8 with base floodplain. However, the grading changes could achieve that, which is what I think is being proposed. Grading changes to be able to achieve those heights off the ground. However, the grading changes are proposed on three sides of this new structure. But no details have really been provided. And we're looking for a TFO survey and evaluation on how those grading changes are going to affect the adjacent property owners. In particular, the Myers residence to the west because that grade is going to now slope. And those floodwaters, when they come in, are going to go around this new structure and flood them out because they're going to be out on a lower level. Because that's going to direct the floodwaters away from the property that it's now on. So as well as the other thing that I was taught by the, actually, the director of FEMA, Long Island. And he says, "Not only do they look at the..." for Long Island, and he says, "Not only do they look at the redirection and the evaluation of floodwaters to the adjacent properties, but also to the owner's property and how those floodwaters will be redirected by the proposed construction to their existing house." So, I see no evaluation of that at all, and no one's mentioned that. So, that's something that we would like Matt to explain.
Isn't that the structure going on pilings?
The structure is going on pilings, but they're raising the grade.
Just in the stair.
So, you've got, if it was just on pilings and the floodwater were going underneath the pilings and under the buildings, that would not be redirecting the water. But when you raise the grade at both ends of the building and on the west side of the building, you're now redirecting those floodwaters around the building instead of under it because now the floodwaters have to go so much higher to go under the water, to go under the building before it even gets to that point.
How, how much is it being raised? I guess that, Matt, is that for you or?
Well, the sections, yeah, sections in elevation of 3 to 5 feet above grade.
That's correct.
And your AE elevation 8 is 8 plus the base flooding, right? Which is 2 feet in New York State.
Yeah.
So, that's 10 feet. So, you're raising the grade. If you've got to be at 10 feet, you're raising the grade 3 to 5.
Let me just interject real quick because I've got some things to talk to you.
Okay, sure.
The AE 10 is what you need for structural components of the building, not the grade around the building. So, the lowest structural component is at 10 feet. Typically puts a finished floor elevation at about 11 or 10. So, will be, the building will be on piles. There will be adjusting of grade for stairs and for access into the building. But what Lori's asking for there is completely reasonable. We'll put together an analysis and get it to the board showing how it will impact not only what's happening on site, but what's happening on the property next door. If that's, that's not a problem. Yeah, it's a good idea, absolutely.
Not just the neighbor, but also to the street. We don't want that floodwater to be pushed further onto a street, which is then going to affect the properties across the street. And I'm not talking about storm water. I'm talking about tidal floodwater. So, that's very different because you've got dry wells for storm water. The next thing is the water table. No water table data has been given. It's only been estimated. However, the CAC had stated in their report that no de-watering is allowed. And actually, Jim Colligan said in today's town board work session that they have an approved resolution where the town board had decided that, you know, before we knew that de-watering wasn't allowed for swimming pools, but Jim confirmed today in the work session that no de-watering is allowed for construction at all. So, is de-watering required because it's not mentioned in this proposal? And I'm wondering how you're going to get those piles and foundation in without de-watering and what the water table actually is.
The piles will be installed similar to the way piles are installed with a dock in the water, so that's not an issue. De-watering is not required for these kinds of installation. But again, if the board wants more detailed information on the pile installation, we can certainly provide it.
Okay. And will de-watering be required for the larger propane tank that you're proposing as well or not?
I'll have to look at it and I'll have to touch my head.
Okay. We had corresponded back and forth with Matt on a few questions, and he said the existing propane tank is going to be removed, a much larger one, but put in in the same area. So, I have the same question in terms of the water table and de-watering and if that's required. And if de-watering is required for anything, I mean, the town says now that that's not allowed for new construction. So, then I guess we'll go from there. But as we know, did you happen to have that in your, in your own code?
I don't think it's part of the code.
Well, just because you said twice, I just want to. Yeah, I mean, I only know what Jim Colligan said.
Yeah.
In today's meeting. So.
I don't quite know if that's true.
Okay, well, that's something that maybe you.
Something they're going forward with, that it's not the way to.
I think they're thinking about it, but I don't think it's.
He said, he said today that there was a, I thought he said that there was a resolution that that already approved. But you could clarify that with Jim because I only know what I heard in today's meeting, which I was surprised because I knew there was a code that said.
Yeah.
De-watering for pools.
It's only pools.
Pools, I know. Okay. So, then the next question is if de-watering is required, how do you plan to mitigate the noise of that de-watering? Because, you know, those pumps are very noisy and where does that discharge being pumped to? So, that's something, if de-watering is required, that those things have to be looked at. So, and then the next question I had from Matt is the application indicates that construction will begin in October and will take a part, the better part of a year, which will go into the summer of 2024. So, I have a two-part question there, and one is how do you minimize or impact, minimize the impact to this busy yacht club? In particular, the junior scaling program, we have 100-plus kids that show up on that club every summer morning. So, there's issues, so we're just concerned about that. And we've already had one incident when the people, the construction team came to do the test hole for the water table. They did not park in the driveway. They parked and blocked one lane of the road. The yacht club wasn't open at that time, but I did get a phone call and it was blocking one lane of the road. And the problem was there was a significant amount of traffic coming to from the yacht club as they were preparing to open. And the view was blocked. So, we had bicycles and vehicles that were trying to go into the oncoming lane but couldn't see around the construction vehicles that were blocking half of the street. So, I asked that because the next question or part two of that question is during construction, where is all the construction vehicles going to park? The staging, the materials, the equipment, the deliveries to make sure that we're not going to have a safety issue.
Yeah. It's outside parking, inside plan, which is off-street.
Okay. I don't have a copy of that. Is that the same copy that's on the town website?
Yep.
So, the other question is who's going to monitor and enforce that? Because, you know, we're going to have a lot of children that run back and forth, and most of these children come on their bicycles and without parental supervision. So, they walk, they ride their bicycles. There's a lot of kids going up and down that road in the summer. So, we're just, our number one concern is the safety for everybody. So, my closing statement is we have said, as I said in my letter, frankly, the Heights prefer that no additional structure be placed in this location. But if the applicant persists, we hope that, you know, the Heights advice, that nearby neighbors, the Heights and the nearby neighbors, that a smaller structure be proposed, modest one level, that is outside of the town regulated areas, but still within the setbacks, that's clearly subordinate, as the code intended for an accessory structure. And to reduce the density in the nearshore overlay district, which is also mentioned in the comprehensive plan for accessory structures. So, if, in the event that the planning board decides to grant this permit, the PAC will do a follow-up with additional conditions for your consideration into the, into the resolution. Any questions for me?
Can you just elaborate a little bit about Willow Path?
Yeah.
I do know what it is, but could you explain like what, what is your concern with their work and Willow?
The only concern we have in Willow Path is the drawings clearly show that there's an easement there. However, that's one of the things on the application that it was checked, that there's no easement. So.
There must be an easement. Everybody has an easement on that.
You have it on a deed, right?
Yes, that's right. So, it's the applicant's responsibility to do, if they can't find the deed at the assessor's office, to do a title search for those provisions restrictions and/or right-of-ways or easements. And often, in the Heights, with these old properties, you do have to do a title search for those. Not a full title search. You can do a title search just asking for that. But they often drop off the deeds as you go forward, but they're still there. They don't ever go away. And they trump, they're still there.
Okay, so, so let's say they didn't do their homework or they didn't do a title search and they didn't know about that. What would you like to see them do, you know, in a neighborly spirit of the Heights Association and its owner? What would you like to see or not happen in that area?
Well, for the easement area, there should be no construction vehicles or materials.
In their parking plan, you, you want Willow Path mentioned, that what they're going to do?
Well, there shouldn't be any parking of Willow because that's clear on the other side of the fence. It's almost at the, on the beach by the bulkhead.
Yeah.
Your parking, your parking should all be closer to the road.
But it can't happen, that's why I'm mentioning it.
No, it can't. It's too far in the back.
It's, yeah, that easement is up against the water.
It's, it's, it's here.
The easement's up against the bulkhead.
So, that's not, you're not having to worry about.
There's nothing happening over there in this plan.
So, is nothing happening over there? That's fantastic. But it does say in the application that there's no easement and just, like I said, there's the, the application and the shortened environmental assessment form have a number of things exist that's.
But I'm asking that because even though we know probably nothing's going to go in there because of size, it just can't, you're saying, like, it should be, it should be written down.
I think he said there's no easements on the application, but there is Willow Path. So, can you just clarify that?
I mean, it's shown on the plan.
Yeah, it's shown on the plan.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, and the other thing about the parkland? Lot being considered a part of my book. Matt mentioned it in his presentation.
Yeah, and I mean, he's right that the, that the height, that, you know, I mean, we consider it a park. I guess the assessor's office doesn't. It's just a terminology. You know, if nothing's happening there, again, we wouldn't want anyone parking on our property during construction. So, without Heights permission, so as long as, you know, there's no issues, I mean, whatever vehicles or construction materials or construction equipment should be, should be parked or used on the Heights, on the applicant's property, not on Heights property, whether it's the road or the, or the vacant lot, that's better, right? Better word, next to the property.
And the other question I had was that, I have a lot of notes here, when you mentioned that they didn't reach out to the Heights Association about hookup.
So.
Did you expect that that was going to happen later or did you ask them about that?
Normally, normally, if you read the Heights regulations and bylaws, you know, we encourage applicants that are proposing to do construction in the Heights to come and meet with us first and show us what they're proposing so that we can go through all these things and cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. We were surprised by this application. We had no future, an advance notice until the application had already been sent to the town. So, we received a package from Matt at about the same time the town got it. So, and then the reason we do that is because, you know, we have a good feel for, you know, what the committees might say. We talk about the connections. We talk about all these things before it gets this far. We didn't have the opportunity to do that.
In the comparison chart where Matt had up all the other properties and their sizes in comparison to the Shepherds, would it be appropriate to say that because of the size of this property, you had hopes that either it would not be developed, like almost as if part of their land would be left as-is for conservation maybe, or that, like you're saying, that you'd wish that they had made something smaller? I'm just trying to picture what's down there, like with the other houses, like do they make full use of all their lot as well or they have a mixture of?
Well, that's right. There's various sizes of the lots down in that area and various sizes of the houses. And, you know, the houses on that side, on the water vista, which is where I bring the comprehensive plan and the quotes that are in that section of the comprehensive plan, are historical structures. And those are on small lots. But there are also three-story structures and structures that have been there clearly since the 1800s. So, I mean, the town code doesn't allow three stories now. But, you know, this one, because of its height, being really raised for the, for the flood zone, you're raising it a certain height for the flood zone, you're raising the grading to accommodate that, and then you've still got two stories. So, I mean, it is quite high, but it's within the limits of the town code in terms of the height.
So, if it had come with something that was like a subordinate, what we think of an ADU?
If it had come, if it would have come with a smaller structure, I'm sure that some of the neighbors and, and, you know, maybe the, we have two committees that review this. One is property and roads, and they look for, you know, the impact in the Heights. So, they are, they are the board that looks through flooding. They look at density. They look at how it affects the neighborhood, the character and changes of the neighborhood. And we have a separate architectural committee that may just deal with how the building looks. And so, we did ask Matt a number of questions in terms of the materials because the drawings were very vague in some of those materials and what were being used. And did not, did answer all the questions. But, you know, I think it is going to appear as a very large accessory structure because of the height to be above that floodplain and the fact that it's two stories. If it were one story, I think that it would be a, a big difference in terms of what people would think. So, I mean, I wouldn't know that. I can't speak for the boards or the committees, or I can't speak for the neighbors. If it's something that, you know, if a revision were looked at, it would have to be presented to them for their comments.
And that's what you mentioned about if we were to approve it, you have a list of other, that's what you're talking about, them going back to those boards.
Well, if you approve this application, you know, we would be asking for some of the things that we talked about, like, you know, the parking and the safety and some of those. If you were, if the changes were to be proposed, then you would ask for a revised application and we'd have to take it back for our boards and send it out to the nearby neighbors again for their comments and.
Stella, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, just a couple quick things, and then Matt will. So, hi, I'm Stella Lagoudas, and I'm representing the Heights as well. Just a couple of additions. Number one, the, I guess, an answer to your question about would we, you know, if it was smaller, would we be okay? I mean, I think if it was smaller and it wasn't in the wetlands, we wouldn't be here tonight to begin with. And, and that, to me, is a big thing because this hearing process gives us a voice and gives everyone a voice who's on the phone and who's sent in letters to be able to say whether we're in support or not. So, had you been not in the wetlands or the applicant not in the wetlands, we wouldn't be talking to you. But the thing is, you've got a 2,287 square foot accessory sleeping quarter, which is encroaching into the wetlands or at least into the adjacent vegetative buffer, which clearly the Conservation Advisory Committee is not happy about either. It can easily be made smaller so it doesn't need to go into that wetlands area. But it's not being made smaller because the applicant wants it bigger. So, you know, I would just say that we've got to remember that, yes, you can adjust for the size of the property, but in some cases, if you put these two structures together, the square foot living space amount is either one and a half times the surrounding house or two and a half times the surrounding house. So, that's without adjusting for the size of the property. So, I mean, it is a mass issue as well. The other, the last thing I'm going to say is just with respect to the two letters of support, I think it's also, we should note that those two people who sent in letters of support are either going to be coming before the planning board for their own exemption or their own permit, or they're going before the zoning board. So, the planning board and the zoning board. So, in other words, they are also looking for relief from something. So, I can't imagine that they would actually articulate that they had an objection, knowing that they, well, would like to have the support of a neighbor. So, thank you.
And Stella, I had another question.
I'll show you.
Instead of Lori, yeah, but you've mentioned that, you're like, you're not responsible for the data per se because you pulled it from where? With this data on the water?
Yeah, let me, I can speak to that. So, we have probably, since we put in the meters 20-plus years ago, and Matt knows this because you used to work with the Heights, we keep, we read the meters every month and we record all of that. And so, we can give you history back as far. And so we can give you history back as far as when those meters went in. And, you know, the pattern in this particular home is that, and it's not unusual, it's not a lot in the off-season and in the winter, and then it spikes dramatically in the season, which, again, that happens with a lot of properties all over the island. That being said, when you compare this to other residential, so we're pulling out yacht clubs and all that other stuff, they are quite high. And, you know, we've had exchanges with the applicant in past years about water usage and whether it was irrigation, whether it was a week in the pool. And even in the years where there haven't been those examples, they still have high water usage. So it's just, you know, the comment is, it's just going to exacerbate when you've got two and a half more bathrooms, uh, you know, an eat-in kitchen with a dishwasher. It's it's just big. So we're just always, as everyone on the island is, we're just very focused on water and the equitable allocation of water um, among our residential users.
I was just curious, I was just curious what, because you picked 2021, 2022, I guess, because they were just the.
They're just recent. I mean, we can give you, you know.
Because I was just thinking about that that was still on the cusp of, on the coattails of COVID 2021. I mean, I don't know these folks, but how many people were in the house? Were they all there for a long period of time? You know, I'm just thinking about usage that might have.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see comparison of all homes in the surrounding area. If they also had a similar kind of thing.
Someone say they have a sprinkler system?
There is, there is hose irrigation.
That's a lot of water usage.
Hose irrigation, did you say? Or is it, is it sprinklers? Or like in-ground sprinklers or is it they put out a hose with the sprinklers?
No, no, they're they're soaker hoses.
It's a town permit, it's sprinklers. Oh, it's in-ground sprinklers.
Okay.
I think that's it. Is that something that you want to see, David, or are you just making a comment like just?
Well, I I think if we want, if we're gonna consider that data of any import, then we need to have comparisons. Just seeing it by itself means nothing to me. I will ignore it. Unless I see it compared to similar sized facilities, similar spaces, not just the ones that are small over on the side, but again, similar footprinted houses in the Heights in that area. That would give me some reason I'd have to have them. That is just a data point with no action. If you want me to, yeah, you can think about that. I consider it.
No, I, that's fine. I think that's, yeah, that's fine.
That's right. It's like I, it's good. It's like I say, like, one data point doesn't make a good trend.
Anything else?
I think that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I might ask some questions. I might have my other question for Matt at least, at least one. I think everybody else has anything. Does anybody, was there anybody else want to talk? I want everybody else to have a chance to talk before I ask questions.
Peter Flower, I send Chickwick to my sister Lisa. We had written a letter in support of of the project and a very nice letter. Thank you.
My mom and I wrote it together.
We, although, look, we support whatever people want to do with their property as long as it's within the guidelines. We do have a couple of, you know, issues that were brought up today and we have some of our our own questions. Especially about, um, uh, obviously the size is sort of a why so big. I think, Matt, you mentioned that there's four parking spaces.
Yeah.
So now you have a house that has four parking spaces. I don't know if anyone's been down Chickwick. We have a massive parking problem. Every, pretty much every weekend, we have people in our own driveway right now that we're constantly battling with with the yacht club. I have two children, excuse me.
We have grandchildren between the four of us because there's four of us. So we have a lot of children.
Yeah, and they're always out there. Um, you know, they're always gone riding their bikes or whatever in the in the area. So, um, you know, we we will be bringing, as mentioned by the town, we we in two weeks will bring something to the committee. We need to raise our house because every uh, full moon, our house pretty much gets flooded. So we're in a in a situation where we really need to get something done soon. But that was no prerequisite of writing a letter in support. Our support overall is just because the guidelines of whatever is supposed to be set forward were put into place for a reason. If they're doing it and they're doing it the right way, they should be allowed to do it. That's kind of, that's kind of like the way that that we really see it. The whole kitchen thing, the whole 2,200 square feet, it looks bad. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be honest. That's that's a pretty big structure. It's bigger than the house that we currently have. The parking issue, I I think would really need to be addressed because now you have a house that's gonna see 12 people and you have four parking spaces. What are we gonna do with that? We certainly can't go out into the road. You know, we've been residents for 38 years. We love the Heights.
We really, we love it here. My parents are in their 80s now. And I really don't want to raise the house because now they're having issues getting up and downstairs. But I tell my mom, it's great exercise, Mom. You're gonna love it. That's a little bit of a, you know, touchy subject for her. But honestly, when, you know, when Scott resees his house, we were noticing, when we talked about the water issue, we're noticing more water on our property. And we've looked at it several times with several contractors and everything. They're like, you have to raise your house. This is not gonna stop. So, and Scott has been great to us. Scott helped us find Matt. And, you know, we know you guys do the best for the community and we're hoping that we, you know, my mom's been friends with Debbie for a long time. We knew her mom. Um, when she passed away, Debbie took over the house. And Debbie's contacted my mom several times about using our home. But we don't run. That's just something my parents always felt weird about. They just don't want anyone else in their home, other family. So I understand she has children that have children and I get that. But when my parents saw the size of the house and we rent cottage, I think my parents said 1,200 square feet maybe, but how big is the structure? And as they were zooming in with their glasses on, I thought, it's really big. So this is the reason why we 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 love Debbie, we we support her. But we just feel that this may be um, bringing up a few more problems than we're ready to handle right now in the Heights. So that's kind of where we stand on this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions in the audience? Anybody on Zoom?
I think Richard went off.
Pam? Pam's got her hand up. Pam's got her hand up. Who's mad at you?
Pam, we can't hear you.
She's frozen.
Your audio's not working.
Neither is her video. She's frozen.
Yeah, it's, she's frozen. She's frozen.
Welcome to the internet on the island. Everybody has really fast internet, right?
Oh, yeah.
You may want to reestablish.
Excuse me, this is, this is Rich Myers. Maybe I'll jump in if Pam's having issues. If you can all hear me.
Yep, yeah.
So, um, you know, th- this is a, this is a difficult situation. The the Shepherds are great neighbors. They're good people. Um, they're very friendly. We wish them nothing but, you know, togetherness as as a family. I I think separating all that emotional um, stuff, which is important from, you know, the actual fundamentals of of this proposal is very important because I I do consider this a major precedent for the island. You know, I think it's very hard to deny that in terms of substance, this is a full home. You know, the consultants and engineers and architects are doing their job as far as shoehorning a structure into the letter of the law from a form perspective. But I would ask the board to consider the actual substance of of this against laws and and codes that are imperfectly written and leave a lot to interpretation. There is absolutely no doubt there's a full kitchen in this house with electric stoves, um, you know, and a sink and a fridge and, you know, all the modern amenities of of a of a kitchen of that square footage. You know, it's it's just undeniable that this is a full kitchen. I also would consider this a three-bedroom home. There's three large rooms on the second floor, one of which is labeled an office, but any realtor on the island would would tell you it's a bedroom. Neither of those components would would fit into the definition of an accessory structure. And again, I I think these substantive matters need to be carefully considered when approving what is a significant new development in a very constrained space wedged between a pool, a property line, and a sensitive wetlands area. And if a maximum buildout of height, width, and length in the 75 to 100-foot zone is allowed for this purpose, the board should consider that precedent to be repeated all over the island. I certainly would if I was in your seat. I don't think that's right for the Heights. I don't think it's right for Shelter Island. My perspective on this is obviously influenced by the fact that we will have a large structure blocking our view and sunlight and everything else within 20 feet of the property line. But I would make the same appeal in any encroachment in this kind of situation, certainly within the Heights and, you know, within any other part of the island. I think some of the points that Matt made about house sizes are irrelevant. If we're gonna default to the lowest historical standard for building code and use 19th century houses um, in the Heights as our standard, the island's gonna look a whole lot different in a few years. And 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 I think those are, you know, for for comparisons. You know, the the idea that it has positive environmental impacts from removing turf, you know, and and any other positives is 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 frankly pretty silly. This is clearly environmentally negative. And I would just emphasize the historic district elements of this. I I think we take for granted that when you're walking down the easements, whether it's Willow or whether it's the easement on Clinton, there are views of the harbor, of sailboats, of the water, of sunlight that um, will be obstructed by new structures. And frankly, the historical character of the neighborhood will be impacted by all this. So to one of the earlier questions, would we be supportive of a smaller structure to accommodate a a larger family in a truly accessory-like way? Of course we would. But this is a full house turned around, facing the wrong way on a property line, extending to the maximum buildout of a very, very liberal interpretation of the of the code. And I I think before making any any decisions, the board should take all that very seriously and consider what it's establishing as far as precedent and what reaction that we and other parts of the island will have, you know, to 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 an approval without any, without any remediation. So that's, that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Pam's, Pam's got her hand up.
Pam?
Let me try that again. Sorry about that.
That's better.
I agree. I I agree that this house, you know, with the labeling of a room as a dinner and office, it's clearly another bedroom on the front, on the second floor there. And again, adding a great room and a dining room, a laundry, um, you know, the the kitchen and all this. This is much larger than was the intent for accessory dwell, accessory dwelling units, these these accessory. What do we even call them? We don't even have a definition for accessory buildings with sleeping quarters. There's no definition of that in the town code. Um, in any case, it does say that accessory structures should have no more than two conventional bedrooms. This is clearly much larger than that. This building now will be able to sleep eight to 10 people and do laundry for eight to 10 people and allow for showers of eight to 10 people on a, on a, on a very high scale of water usage in a very sensitive area on the island. And again, water has been number one topic of the town these days. That should absolutely be considered. I I don't believe that, you know, on the shortened environmental assessment form, it was written and then that this is within the zoning code. I don't believe that it is because this is in fact an accessory apartment. The kitchen is clearly stated on the plan, so that is not in conjunction with the zoning codes of the town. And as far as the comprehensive plan connection, it's also not in conjunction with that because it's not maintaining the the community character and the character of the neighborhood. It's not, it's not, it's in, it's going to affect the visual impacts of the area, the traffic. If it's only parking for parking spaces for four vehicles and now you have another building on the property that can accommodate eight to 10 individuals, what is that going to do for the traffic flow in that neighborhood? You know how busy it is. It's the yacht club at the end of the road. This is, uh, this is a safety issue and it should be addressed by this board. This is also needs, requires a letter from the state historical preservation office because of its location. And I don't see that in the application. And um, I really believe just as the CAC has voted on this, that this this application should be denied in its entirety. It it it's just, it's, the the square footage alone is larger than many houses on Shelter Island at an average of about 2,000 square feet. And that number came out in a couple of meetings ago on on other discussions, that that's the average size of a home on Shelter Island. Not an accessory dwelling unit that's supposed to be built for guests. You know, overnight guests, maybe, you know, temporary, temporary living. This is, this has clearly not been designed for that. And I, and I, I really would encourage you to take a deeper look at all of these impacts that that a structure of this size and this location would have in this neighborhood and on Shelter Island as a whole. Because again, if in fact you decide that this is permissible under the town code, this will set precedence in other areas. And I just dare to, I shudder to think of what the ramifications of that will be long term. Significant impacts on the environment. And I will say one other thing, that I have not heard anyone from the board say that this, they had declared that this is in fact a type-two action. And I will say that not all single-family dwellings are type-two actions. And and the town code has a provision as a type-one action of anything that may degrade or dispoil the wetlands. And this clearly has a possibility of that from the sanitation issues of the, just the use of the property of so many people who could use this property now. And if, in fact, it is going to be a double rental property, which seems to suggest that's a possibility, um, I think, I think we have to do a little more forward thinking on this project before you move ahead. And that's all I'll have to say for this evening. I hope that you adjourn this. I hope that the new plans that have been presented tonight will be put back up onto the website so that the public has the ability to review them because this is new information again, um, that was not put out prior to this planning, this public hearing. And and I would request that if nothing else, you adjourn.
There's nothing new presented.
There is no, there's nothing new put out, right?
Maybe she's referring to the.
Presentant's new.
Matt's drawing, Matt's presentation.
Yeah, my presentation, and I can provide that.
Okay.
It's a part of the record.
Okay, but I think it's already there.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Pam.
Okay, thank you very much.
Miss Shepherd.
Oh, yes. Please come up.
I will be very brief. I want to thank everyone for their time. We're sure all tired and wanna go home. To all our neighbors who worked so hard on this, I just wanted to assure you on a couple of small things. We actually have six parking places and we have shared them, three of them, um, with our immediate neighbors who have gone through a horrible two years of construction. And we have five grandchildren. We've been part of an effort on our street. We've been part of an effort on our street. We're so concerned about safety. So, you know, we will abide by any rules in the Heights about sort of construction, frankly, probably wouldn't be. We're so delayed, we're going to lose another summer. That's just how it is on children. I just wanted to back up and tell you a little about the history of land use on our property. We've been there since 1963, but there's actually a lot more. So in the 1880s, where our pool is, there was an enormous, wonderful Victorian house. And somebody perhaps know about this. It was a three-story house with a tower. And its condition deteriorated. And first, they removed the tower. They kept looking there. I have a charming painting of it, that Mrs. Badger painted. But finally, they took it down. And they lived in it until they could build our house, which is why our house in 1957 is absolutely on the property line. In fact, it shouldn't be there. It looks like it has all this land, but that's because we're so fortunate that the Heights owns that land. So we have a large lot, an unusual lot, for, you know, the little walk. Other than the Gray's house, which was two houses, and then there was a fire, and that segmented up with that one large one. But our lot is very large with a small house. We have four small bedrooms. We have two daughters and five grandchildren. So my grandparents moved there in 63. They built their swimming pool in 67, one of the earlier ones on the island. We've had to restore it twice. And we bought this property out of their estate. My mother was already deceased. We skipped a generation, which is why frankly, we weren't of an age to move here. We were young, working, living around the country. So now I'm 68, and my husband is retired. We've moved to Washington, DC. That's where our eldest daughter lives. She wants her three children to be here for a month in the sailing hut. We won't be renting anymore. That's why we were renting. We've never had complaints about our tenants. They've all bought houses. They serve on boards. They're a vault here. But we're finished with that chapter. Obviously, we can't guarantee that to you. We can't guarantee what will happen when I die. People have asked me about this. No, we're sorry. I appreciate that. We intend, you know, to leave our house to this daughter. We have another daughter who will also come with her two children. So the cottage was designed for a family of five for a month or six weeks. So that's, and we didn't want to enlarge our house. I mean, frankly, we don't like what we've seen that's happened on Shelter Island in terms of the mega houses. And we didn't want to blow up our swimming pool, although I sort of wish we had because it costs so much to restore. So that's how we came about thinking that we should build this guest house. And we were advised that we were allowed to do that. And I resisted the concept of a one-story structure because to me, that looks like a pool house from the 50s or 60s. And I don't feel it is compatible with the character of the neighborhood. And it really doesn't solve our problem. I mean, I would rather not build at all. What I really wanted, and the reason we're here tonight in terms of why are we going into the vegetative buffer, or not even that, the adjacent area to the vegetative buffer, is because I wanted a porch. Our house doesn't have a porch on the water. Every other house has a porch on the water. And I thought that would be wonderful. I had no idea that I was opening this enormous can of worms. But if you're in our house or on our, because of where our pool is, to achieve something that had some balance and integrity, we felt it would be desirable to encroach slightly. And just finally, I want to say that this relatively, and maybe you could tell us again, Matt, the square footage, but our own home is considerably larger than this house. Another people said to me, they're almost the same size. And I just can't believe that. It's like 2,300 and 3,000 something.
It's 2,900. Sure, all on one floor.
Two small bedrooms downstairs and two up.
Yeah, the existing house is 2,965. The accessory building is 2,287.
Well, this is for you all to hash out, but I just wanted to give you some context. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
One is...
Howard Jones.
Howie?
Yes. I think the meeting is very good and helpful, and it points out all the things that the conservation advisory committee has brought up as far as the near-shore overlay peninsula being a very sensitive area to the environment. And that is, if we continue to build in that area, we're going to destroy all the perimeter houses on the island. And another thing is, I know that, you know, the water for the Heights is, their well is only, I think, a couple of hundred yards from the West Neck Water District well. And West Neck Water District well is being worked on now because last summer it cavitated due to lack of water. So all of these areas, you know, you're building an accessory building, it's going to be occupied. And the water usage is going to increase, probably double for the property in that area. And it's not, this is not the only problem that we have in the island. But this is all over Long Island. I mean, we're using a different aquifer, a salt-source aquifer supposedly, but everybody else in our north and south shore is going to suffer from water. It's just inevitable. We see the water rising, saltwater intrusion getting worse. And as buildings go up, you know, you get the subsidence of the ground. So the ground starts to go down. So this is a disaster waiting to happen. It won't happen in the next 15, 20 years. But don't think about any of your grandchildren enjoying the island as we have so far. That's all I'd like to say. And please consider the considerations of the comprehensive, I mean, of the Conservation Advisory Council. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Howie. Anyone else?
Anyone else, right, Christina? Anyone else? I can't see.
I think this John Evans is trying to get on. We have to reboot. Tried to unmute him.
He has some microphone.
Can you all hear me?
Not really.
Okay.
Can you hear it?
You can hear me. Can you hear me?
No.
Static.
Static.
All right. Let me see if I got some sort of phone here. Maybe it's...
You were right. He was trying to say something.
Disconnecting with the act. Like Pam had to.
Is someone else in the room dialed in with...
Yeah, hold on a second.
And that's when you get...
Yep.
Can you hear me now or not?
No.
It's two John Evans, so he probably has two devices, yeah.
Do I have to drop one of your, one of your dialings?
Yeah, you're connecting on two different devices. Feedback, as they say.
Eyes is looking to bring in. I have a optic.
So he got rid of one of them.
Wait, when I see it.
He got rid of one of them.
Okay, good. Maybe now try.
Try again, John.
Unmute a person.
I'm asking him to unmute. He has to unmute on his own, which he has done numerous times.
Can you hear me now?
Same problem. He still has those two.
You have two devices.
Yeah. Christina, you can't pick one out?
I can, but I don't know which one. Yeah.
Seems like he's trying to talk about that one.
Can you hear me now at all? A little bit, but you have to get rid of one of your devices.
You have two connections.
You got two connections.
He says he's trying to do that.
I'm trying to do that.
Just walk in a different room.
They're both unmuted.
All right. Is that better now? Nope.
Nope.
Better now?
Pick the other one.
The other one is connected. It only has a... Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Afraid it doesn't work.
You can't hear me now.
Not really.
Can you call somebody's cell phone and put them on speakerphone? I don't know.
I'd really like to hear from him. He's a very important neighbor.
Yeah, if you give him a call, he has to be on the record.
Is there any guy that's on this, putting him on?
We'd only, I mean, it's only either through this. We don't have a call. He submitted a letter. He can hear us, right? Does he want to read his letter maybe, or like, or want someone else to read it?
Can we ask him to get out and try and come back in totally?
John, you want to reconnect and come back?
It's your breakfast. Still there, though.
Christina, can you cut that other one out?
There's only one. It's enough.
Disconnect the one on the left. Make him, force him to call back in.
Yeah.
I thought he said okay. I thought he...
I thought so too, but he just went mute.
He can hear us the whole time as we talk.
John, yeah.
You got to actually leave the meeting.
Quit Zoom.
Not just mute. You got to leave the meeting.
You able to chat with him?
Yeah, he did log out.
He didn't log out.
Yeah. You were still in the meeting. You didn't log out. Maybe we just, if he wants to submit additional questions.
John, you will have to stop. No, we cannot do it.
Quit.
No, you have to like completely log out of the meeting. Really exit the meeting. I think I have him on speaker. Okay.
Yeah, that helps.
There you go.
There you go.
Maybe that's the issue.
Dad, do you want to go? Hello? That's...
That's good.
Sorry. Get him on. That sounds clear. Okay, I don't know. I guess that didn't work. I don't know.
Grace, put him on your phone.
Or Grace.
I'm not, we're not in the same house.
You need to turn off his, you need to turn off your speaker.
I wish I had that kind of... Oh, here you go. Okay.
I have to ask him to unmute again, maybe.
He can do it on his own.
All right, I'm going to get off this and try to just log into the phone, log in from my phone again if I can.
Sounds good.
Actually, you know what? We can hear him right now. No?
Meetings are nice.
So we're going to be here until 10:30.
We call it just on audio, right? The audio Zoom?
Yeah, I think the audio Zoom.
Yeah, audio's fine. Can you hear me? Bet you can't hear me.
No, you need to...
The audio's not fine.
It's very loud feedback over you, so we can't... Mic up a little bit.
All right, I'm going to try to, I'm going to get out of my computer and just try to dial in with my phone.
Yeah, he's still on.
He's still on.
He's on his laptop, so he's on some of the...
Call it as well. He's on two multiple things.
Interesting. Which one is helpful? See, in the future, if we have an issue like this, one person has to play.
I think you could, okay, good enough.
Do this. Don't do it.
Yeah?
Let's go. Do this. Let's go.
Christina, since she's runs the tech.
Okay, that's... Because we were all trying now.
Can you hear him now or no?
No, we can hear you only. No, we only hear you.
Is it two better? Can you hear, can you hear me? John Evans, can you hear me? No?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, just a couple of comments, because I think people have hit on the right points. You all know that this is probably a road that's 150 feet. It's got eight houses on it, 150 yards rather. It's got eight houses on it right now, plus a yacht club, which is huge. And I think the, I think you really got to consider what the water consumption is going to be in addition to what's already there. We all know the accessory structures of the stoner. I mean, I think that's really been established. And, you know, Debbie's a neighbor, but she said that this structure is really for her kids to visit and outpouring her for a month or six weeks for her kids. So we're building this huge structure, it's two stories high, 2,300 square feet. It's going to, you know, I mean, from a personal point of view, it's going to block my bad view of the harbor, of Dearing Harbor, for, you know, the kids that are visiting for a month or six weeks. It makes no sense. In addition, you know, you have concern about the flooding that occurs on people that have, you know, and this is only going to exacerbate probably the situation because of the grading and so forth that has been mentioned. So I really think that, you know, you approve this, you're setting a bad precedent on the island for any new structure. I mean, this is a very tight community. The house, it's crowded as is. And I think another structure, you know, especially this structure, is really detrimental to both the neighborhood and the street and the adjacent properties. Thanks, and I hope you heard me. Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions for Matt. It's early yet. I think it's not really, I see one comment. It's like, it's not really fair that we became the new house of the, of doing wetland permits. First one, people gets to recue themselves. So we'll be having that conversation later. Matt, thanks for taking the time. And thanks for everybody for the comments. I have a couple of questions. I consider detailed to some things we noticed when visiting the space. One is the removal of a decaying tree. But there's another tree that's still like, would be right at the corner, it looks like. The idea to keep that tree, that would be in the, I guess it'd be the northwest corner. It's not on your diagram, but there's a tree basically right at that corner.
I would defer to Debbie on that, and I believe that's...
It's not in great shape.
Yep.
It's very... I actually just blocked the property.
Can you get the microphone?
Here, can you come up with this?
That's what I'm taking. Sorry.
It's not in great shape.
Yes.
And it should come down. I just walked the property with our landscape designer who works with Fred, our burist. Basically, all the trees on our property were like my grandmother. They hang on until they're 96, and now we're losing them all. So we have every intention of planting trees. Shelby Monboney is especially concerned about this. We will plant trees. We will plant big, expensive trees. And, you know, I don't have a landscape design yet because it was premature.
Yep. Interesting, okay, great. I was wondering, because one was highlighted and the other one wasn't, that's why I was questioning. There's definitely, I saw other areas on the property that definitely needed...
One, the one that's on the application, the claret breeze moved. We looked at it, gosh, that's a beautiful tree, you know, and it's such a healthy looking tree. And then I took a stick and I stuck it inside it like 17 inches, so it's hollow inside.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's sad. There's other trees that need help on the property, which... One question. Oh, the other question is on the, and I'm not going to go argue in this session about all the code. The great, the great, the well-written code we have in the town. The kitchenette, kitchen, place where there is food. There currently is no stove. But is there plans for a stove top, electric stove top, anything like that?
They can't have that, by God.
Right, so in theory, you could have a covenant that would allow it, basically no stove placement or something. It's a possibility.
I'm sure it's possible. I don't know if it's typical to do a covenant that requires someone to abide by the law.
Yeah, I know, that's the problem. It's, the problem is people who don't have it, then go add it later, right? That's, I think, part of the challenge. Okay. And then, so what you're saying, I want to make sure I understand, you're saying this is not an accessory apartment?
Correct.
You're saying an accessory building or structure? And which means, of course, it cannot be rented, so that's one of the things. So no matter what, it couldn't be, so that actually is a moot point because it's against code to be rented. And two bedrooms we already know about. And there's, again, that's the normal, everybody plays bedroom. To the conventional, yeah. Okay, I think that's the only... Oh, I think the only thing, an accessory building used for sleeping quarters talks about that if there's no accessory building, it should have kitchen facilities. It doesn't say stove or anything, it just says kitchen facilities. So I'm trying to understand, how does this?
What we've always done since the codes play is go back to the definition of a kitchen as it applies to an accessory apartment, because that's the definition that the town uses. And the town has been very consistent in using that definition. If there's no stove, there's no...
Yeah, and so it goes back to the well-written code.
Exactly. We've been trying to get the town to address its code for as long as I've been doing this. Unfortunately, it's not real high on the list. Every once in a while, it comes to the surface, and then it drops.
There's a lot of that, okay. I just want to make sure I understood. My reading.
That's kitchenette.
It's, yeah, I get it. I think that's all, I think that's all the questions I have. I just want to make sure I understood where you're coming from on.
I have a question, a follow-up now, since we heard from a shepherd that there's six parking spaces. And what, Stella you mentioned, or maybe Lori mentioned four, so I like to see.
I was thinking of, but if you want to come up and elaborate on six.
Just because I heard something different.
Yeah.
So we have the AT&amp;E garage, and that list is also happened. And you can park a car parallel right in front of that garage. And next to it, we have gravel and all hedged and a gate. Two more cars, that's three so far. That's three. Those are the spaces that are going to be used if we build this unit. And then in front of the 1957 house.
Oh, there's a garage.
A driveway with a very large skirt.
Yep.
And so three cars fit in there comfortably, people turn around in it all the time. They come off the ferry, and they're like, whoa, I don't want to go to the yacht club. So anyway, there's a lot to work with there, and I certainly would be riding any contractors and subs and architects. They cannot park on the street, it is too dangerous.
That's, that's clear in the, in the diagram report. I was looking at just the ones on the, on the west side, I forgot about that. There's a house over here with a garage.
And I actually wasn't thinking about a car parking parallel to the road in front of the garage. I was just thinking about the two spots that were to the right-hand side of the garage, so that's... And, I mean, if your garage is like mine, there's no parking in it.
It's just bikes.
It's just full of stuff, but yeah. So that's why I wasn't counting any room inside the garage either.
Yeah. That helps.
And I also wanted to ask Miss Shepherd a question. That's okay.
Yeah.
And I'm asking this question just because I'm, I'm also, I'm from a different part of the island, Silver Beach, and there's you know, processes that we have in Silver Beach, our things and dialogues and little pockets of communities and subsections and all that. So it seems like the Heights has a very well communication plan, you have, you're approachable. And they mentioned that when you were thinking about doing this plan, that they had hoped, or that maybe they even invited you to come in and sit down with them and think about all this. And I just wanted to know what, what...
Thank you for asking, Matt, I really appreciate it. I apparently made a mistake, and I am, I'm so embarrassed. I serve on boards and commissions having to do with historic resources and historic preservation. You know, I should know better, but, and I live in a historic district right now in Maryland. I communicated with my neighbors. I thought that was the way to do it. And I wrote to everyone, and our architect was involved in offering to walk the property and sharing plans. And we had quite a bit of back and forth, particularly with the Mom Donnys. And basically, I was advised that that was sufficient, that we would then come to you because this, I was told, was just about the adjacent land to the vegetative order. So I really didn't understand that we were going to be looking at this wide range of issues that, you know, should have been part of a conversation in my neighborhood. And it's pretty devastating to our family, actually, because the whole reason we wanted to do this is because we're so invested in what is now the fifth generation of our family and being in this neighborhood with our friends. So it's only a big disappointment, but I'm sure we can regroup. So thank you for asking.
Okay.
All right, any more questions, anyone?
Not for the...
So we're going to keep this open, we're not going to...
And we can make it a responsible response.
I have to digest a lot of this. I took a lot of notes, I need to think about this a lot earlier.
All right, so we'll keep it open, and then we'll...
I know, Matt, you need to, you're going to do a grading and a grading. Yeah.
Okay. So this, what Lori brought up about the waterside, you know, surge and that flooding. Not just stormwater reflection, but coming from the water to...
Yeah. Yeah, well, there's a typical analysis that we can do when you're looking at a
I think that'll be helpful.
A grading impact, and at this site, there's not enough grading to create the kind of issue that there's a concern about. But we'll put together a report that analyzes that and show you why we've come to that conclusion.
Yeah.
And the part about the easement, too?
Yes.
And then the revised plans, reduce the height a little bit.
Yeah, we reduced it a foot.
So we'll submit that. Submit new plans for them. So we're consistent.
And I've got a laundry list of a few other things that we'll provide for you.
Maybe just be more specific on the parking plan, too, about the lot that they own across the street and, you know, parking vehicles.
The Heights Lot, next one, yeah.
I'd also ask, just on the, I'm sorry to interject again, but on the landscaping point, if the board can and the shepherds could consider what is actually feasible to be planted within a 20-foot zone between the structure and the property line that is abutted by two very large, mature trees that sit on our property. A Norwegian maple tree and a black cherry tree that are probably 75 to 150 feet respectively. And digging into that root structure, planting anything of size, I think, would be very challenging. So when we talk about landscaping plan, let's actually be rational about what is feasible versus what is just talk. That would be another ask of mine. Thank you.
That's part of why I walked the property this week with our landscape designer. We've already planted several years ago two small trees, like a lower garage there near the property line that are doing well. And yes, we are concerned about how narrow the space would be and that it might be shady. She feels certain that two trees can be planted in there that would be very effective. And a lot more research needs to be done.
Stella would like to add something, Marcus.
Okay. Sure.
Oh, sorry, Lori.
Quick, then, we're all starving, right?
Oh, it's okay.
No. No time, you want to talk as much as you want.
Well, I'm starting. I need to say, if we're, you know, if we're going to do landscaping, or landscaping is proposed, and a landscaping plan, I would just ask that, you know, irrigation be addressed as well. Because of irrigation, depending on how much landscaping is proposed, may not, you know, be allowed, and further code may change. That may be a building department issue where a system may need to be brought in, it might not be able to be used high water. So that whole evaluation of landscaping and irrigation needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I think we're used to seeing a landscape plan or a vegetation plan.
I've had some already.
Yeah. Something we'll have to see.
If we could just tie irrigation into that.
It's part, that's part of.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Okay, yeah, because there may, it may open up a different can of worms in irrigation and the system. Yes. No, that's the same thing. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Got it, Matt?
Did that answer?
Good.
That's good?
Good.
Answered what you were asking about?
All right, so we're, we'll put this to the side right now, and then we'll go on to the next.
So do you adjourn to a specific meeting, correct? You'd have to, otherwise it'd have to be re-notice? So do you, how long would the applicant require to make his submissions? Would the next board meeting?
Next meeting would be fine.
That work for our schedule and everything? That works?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be re-notice, yeah.
Okay, then it doesn't have to be re-notice?
Okay, okay, great. Adjourn to the next meeting, okay, great, the 11th.
Which is July.
11th.
July 11th. Maybe do a motion to adjourn to the next.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to adjourn to the next meeting.
Nice, thank, please second.
All aye.
Okay.
Can I get in?
Can I get in?
Yeah, yeah.
It's curled up.
Thank you, thank you everyone for that.
Taking a nap.
It was educational, cross-border.
Yeah, that was educational.
But you take a nap. We're going to talk about this later, Ian, that's good. Dang. So that ends our...
Thank you.
That ends our business meeting. Now we get into the work session. We have ongoing applications. We have the Bloom Minor Subdivision. They have they haven't... Actually, you know, while I'm here, does anyone want to take a break for two minutes, three minutes, or is everyone okay? You want me to just keep going?
Let's keep going.
Let's keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, you could throw some, you could throw some of those in there.
All right, the Bloom Minor Subdivision, they have until July 10th currently to file their application. I did speak to Barbara Bloom, and they're waiting on two things. One, they have an application for a grant. The, I think I mentioned last month, the member from the WQI reached out to me. They hope to hear in the next few weeks whether or not they're going to get a grant from the town. I think they're still, they're pretty close to hearing it from the county or state also. And then the second part, I guess with all the new work with the Suffolk County Water Authority, they are looking into tying into that. And they won't have a determination on that until September or October, the way I've been told. So they will be coming to us next month for an extension. And I did ask Barbara, she's been sitting with us for quite some time. And I was hoping that they could... I mean, I don't know how comfortable everyone feels. I'd like to help them out as much as possible. But I think we passed, what is the appropriate weight when this is? The lot was, when it was merged, increased the non-conformity, we were told it was going to be addressed very quickly. Yeah. And so, but right now, that's where it stands. Matt left us for a minute, but I wanted to ask him about the Robert Subdivision. We just extended SH29 Westneck LLC, the lot line adjustment. We extended the deed submission to July 15th. And we extended the white roadway construction until July 28th. We did that today. So that's it for current applications. I did send around, and you have a copy of a flow chart that I developed. And probably worthwhile including this with the application. And I don't, I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't know if you have any opportunity to look at it or have any questions. I did have one question, because I know, I know that we did the, I was somewhat surprised to see a written-up memo. Or was it CARPA, whatever, which I thought we were not going to be writing memos. That was, that was in...
Those are my notes, just using a template.
Okay, cool. I was confused, like, wait a minute.
It's unofficial.
Should I have been writing something? Thank you, okay, cool. So the idea was this would also help our clerk out. They can put a date of submission, make sure the fee is there. Date is distributed, determined, complete and distributed, and it just tracks, helps track the application. So if no one has any questions, I will include that with the...
So your question was the CO?
Yeah.
You know, why do we need to do this?
All right, so the second part of it was something Joe recommended last time, that we request a certificate of occupancy completion with the application. If we're looking at a structure and it doesn't have these, then it's not legal, technically, I guess. You mean, you mean not for the, what they're going to end up with, but what they are... The existing structures. Yeah. So the ZBA currently requires COs.
The wheelhouse of like the building department?
Yes, I thought.
Yeah, I don't know how that would fall under.
In theory, they'll do a denial, and they should have looked and seen that it's in, it's in code or whatever.
And the planning board doesn't have enforcement.
Fair enough, just reacting to what was brought up last time, that's, I'm glad to ask you guys.
Yeah, that's their building department.
Okay. So the current application, that's online, works. Matt, Robert, where do you stand with that?
We're, we've got a surveyor out there updating the survey that we're actually going to end up having to do. I don't know if we're going to have to retract it and bring it back in, but he's getting another, he's doing, in addition to the subdivision, he's doing a lot line change within a joint new property now. So the whole thing is getting, it's not getting all redone, but it's going to have a significant difference. Still working on the right-of-way stuff, just because we're waiting for the new survey, so that we can meet the bounds and all that on the new survey for the right-of-way.
So our last meeting, we're commenting about this being on the agenda for ever and ever. We'll be quite often, button can drop, and if it comes back and it's not materially different, we can waive all conditions. Come back when you're ready. It sounds like it might be materially different now.
It's going to be, yeah.
So then, let's, let's take it off the list.
And if you need something from me, a letter, ask me to do that, I'll do that, yeah, okay.
That would be helpful. CAC memos and third-party letters. Typically, the town board, the ZBA doesn't list these, put them on the website when they're done. On the town website as part of the application. That has never, they've never done that. We make knowledge in the, in the minutes, knowledge having received them. But it's never posted for, if we get 12 letters, is it really up to our clerk to be posting everything online? It's all real.
Where are you right now?
No, it's not on the list.
Okay.
I think with the CAC memos, even though the town board never posted them as part of the application, I think it'd be beneficial for us to post it, so that the average viewer can look at it. With the letters, if someone wants a copy, they can foil us for it. But I don't think we want to go through the extra administrative duty of putting it all up. Do you guys have any thoughts about that?
So we're clearly not posting letters, correct? We don't post.
No, the correspondent, they've never been practiced.
Correct, okay. And I think the only thing about the CAC stuff is they're doing interpretations of code. I mean, it's one of those, for example, this last one, it's like, they're making a certain interpretation about things that might be different than what we think or, I just don't know if it's.
That was Laura.
Yeah, but that's a public meeting comment, right? That's, and those things aren't public, right? She came after it. I mean, we read the CAC and you, we went over it, right? So it's the same in my mind. I don't know. I'm not against it, because I'm certainly a firm believer in open government. I think everything should actually be posted, but I don't know.
I think it'd be better because it would resist the desire to do a fourth.
What do the CAC think of this?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't asked the CAC.
No, I mean, it would mean so that people can say, if they're wondering what the CAC thought about it, it'd just be there.
This CAC memo that was part of, they have, it's part of the application process.
Yeah.
But since a public comment, which is just, you know, the public gets to make comments, but as part of the application process, the CAC submits a letter. So I think in that, because of that, it would be beneficial to have it.
And the CAC comments are in the meeting minutes, which get posted on their page and ready.
I see.
So it's already up there.
Right.
So I think just nesting in where the application be.
The one thing that might be, as of timeline, like, let's say yesterday was perfect example, right? They discuss CARPA, which we prepared a memo that is distributed and can be posted, but the minutes will not be approved until the next month, right? So the minutes are not posted or prepared.
Right.
Several.
Maybe, so we maybe get a CAC letter, but it's not actually published out there yet before we have a meeting. So, right?
That's, but it's still part of the record.
Part of the record.
It is, yeah.
I don't know, I'm for adding it. We have consensus, if we have a consensus not to, then I'll follow your lead.
I think we should have.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the more people know is better, because if you don't give them the information and they start imagining. Or if we delay it, you know, right? They start thinking, so let's try to hide something, just.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think showing everything that we have, what we're, it's better.
Sunlight.
Okay.
Some of the real quick. That's a second point as well.
Sure.
You see it a lot of times with applicants who aren't familiar with the town's process. They don't even know the CAC is looking at these things.
Yep.
And then when they get in front of a hearing and all of a sudden here's this memo from the planning board and from the CAC, when they're in front of the town wetlands, they say, what the heck is this? How come I didn't know about it? Who are these people and what is, you know, why didn't I have a chance to be there to discuss or defend the application when it was being reviewed? And there may not be an obligation to let them know, but it certainly has created lots of, lots of bad feelings, for lack of a better word, you know, on some applicants' part, just because they didn't know the process. So having, having at least something out there to say, hey, you know, here's the website, this information is available to you. And that would serve the applicants and whoever's doing it as well, I think.
And this flow chart should help too, as part of the application.
That was a big.
They'll understand that that's.
Good idea.
In the, in the past, when the town reviewed wetlands, I assume they did not, they just had the memos, they did not have any from the CAC or from the planning board at the meeting.
They actually did.
They did, and liaisons always read them during the reading for the record. They're part of the minutes, yes.
Yeah, so my question is whether or not we should have a CAC person sitting here during our public.
Howard was on.
Howard was on. Was he considered on, okay.
That would be.
I didn't realize, because I actually don't know everybody around wetlands.
So the other part of it too is the CAC meetings are now on YouTube. And we can, we can pull them up and watch them so we can get a better feel for what they're doing. And they can likewise watch our meetings, which are on YouTube, and get a feel of how we are responding to the memos and their applications.
Yeah, exactly. In reflection, it would have been good, I would, for me personally, to have seen their discussion of, of the cheap before, before coming in this meeting, which I didn't even think to do. Because again, I'm just getting used to the process, but.
Yeah. They also, I mean, what's good about the YouTube is they talk about 10 different subjects and maybe only one application.
It allows you to.
It's good. And watch the whole, all the other stuff too.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Now going back, since we're in the work session, the wetland permit applications, we did close McCann, 12 West Moreland Drive. I think we discussed many of our comments, let me just, there's, the kind of list that Julie and I put together was the removing of a cesspool 46 feet from the wetlands. They're installing an IA FujiClean Sen-7 outside the 100-foot wetlands area. They're installing a five gallon per minute supply well for water conservation. They're installing stormwater drywells and recharging the gutters, which currently don't exist. They're removing an existing dwelling from the 1960s with the HOHAM energy efficiency and constructing something with 2020 P efficiency. They're removing the asphalt.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you didn't close the record on McCann. It's still open for Matt.
Oh, so we.
Yeah, you can't make a decision yet until.
No, no, I was just, we're just, I thought discussing, so you really want to wait till next?
I would wait to have all the information in front of you.
Fair enough. So Descarpé, Hills Tam is on hold for the applicant. We have a new application, Weinstein and Hensley. Who would like to sign up for that? 28 South Midway Road.
I heard you volunteered.
You want to do it?
Yeah.
That's an interesting one. It's a ranch that the new owners took a bunch of trees down, they started renovating the place and then the town showed them down.
Did you get a review of, did you have a chance to look at it?
Yes.
I thought you did review it.
I did, I submitted a memo.
You just got it right, right?
Like, just recently.
Like last week?
Yeah.
June 1st? It was right after it came out, I just had some time to work on it quickly, yes.
Can you please bump it up?
All right, so Julie and David, we have two special permit applications, they're both on hold, five Winthrop and one Pantheon. That's all I have. Do you guys have anything for us? I'm making motion to adjourn the June 13th meeting. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we adjourn, we spoke to discuss the potential subdivision, I think that's why you're here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my apologies and thank you, Julie.
Oh, oh, okay. And Nostrum, okay. This one is, so that we're just in the preliminary stages of trying to decide what we can do. It's 59 Nostrum Parkway, Fowler Property, will flex up against, what's it, Lockton Point Estates or whatever. So a handful of houses there. What they're looking to do is subdivide it, it's, I forgot, it's up in my head, I think 14 acres and chain. And what they want to do is subdivide it into five lots, but the parkland is the question, is how are they gonna, how are they gonna manage the parkland? It's on the water, so you don't want to be putting it on the waterfront, you would be wanting to put it either on the flanks. And so we've got two-thirds and one-third on one side and the other of the 10% for parkland or we would put it along the road. And a couple of questions that came up is, one, what does the ownership of the parkland have to look like? Does it have to be an HOA? Can it be an LLC or some other type of ownership entity? Or if we can figure it out in a way so that we can put the parkland on the driveway side of each of the properties, so it's owned by the individual property and we wouldn't have some other separate kind of entity? The only thing I'm not sure about with that is if we can have driveway access and easement across the parkland, so that the easement wouldn't factor into the 10%. But if I had the 10% parkland stretching across the road and we can give them 20-foot wide access easements across the parkland, so we can solve all of those problems. I don't know if it's, if that's a little bit hard to conceptualize.
You saw in my memo, and I'm gonna jump ahead, I know the Stiber subdivision. I was under the impression that all, either the public has to be able to have access or the members of the subdivision have to. But that doesn't preclude that a piece of each parkway belonged to the specific lot. So they just can't build on it, they have to step back from it, but they, but that's my, I've seen that happen before, but I don't know how common that is and what structure. And that would potentially get them around the HOA.
Could we do a 20-foot or some, whatever, a reasonable access easement across the parkland in that area?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Would end into the, the 10% would be exclusive of those little easements. That way we could have a stretch along the road, everybody in the subdivision has access to it because it's along the road. Everybody from the public would have access to it if it became public parkland because it's along the road. And then it also wouldn't end up putting a park area internal to the subdivision that would then create a problem with access. Or they can own the road. Well, it's Nostrum Park. You have no road. No, no, but they can own the driveway. And then each, you know. The only problem with owning the driveway is it would turn them into flag lots and we'd only be able to have two out of the five be flag lots. So it creates, it's not, I don't know if it's an insurmountable problem, but it is, it does make it a little bit messier.
Have we done before where the parkways, the 10%, it doesn't have to be all contiguous? That's not any, there's no requirement to that, right? Could be.
We've done that before, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Stiber did it and also we did it at Clark Castle.
You're talking about to me is like, here's a spot, driveway, here's another spot, driveway.
Exactly, yeah.
So the actual lots are.
Yeah.
But the, those small parks, who would own them?
The individual property. So if you've got, let's say, five small parks that were, or they were on, like, superimposed over top of the lot that it's facing to.
So like conservation easements placed over?
Yes, same idea. Yeah, as long as that would satisfy the requirement, that's, it kind of, it solves the problem with the HOA and, you know, the individual property owners working with each other and, you know, kind of cleans it up.
Interesting.
No, we were just kind of, wanted to toss it out. Do you have a copy of the survey available? I didn't bring it with me. No, Ian's got it right there in front of me.
Then the other question that you had in that was the, the vegetative buffer and the adjacent regulated area, if they can be, they have to be excluded from the total lot for yield, which is how I.
Right, that was my understanding number two, and I wanted to clarify that. And also clarify if the, and I believe that if we're doing the parkland along the water, then the regulated area is excluded from the parkland. So not just the wetlands, but the wetlands and the 100-foot setback is excluded from the parkland. But it was.
But if you did it against the street, it would be the same, same thing.
What do you mean it would be the same?
Well, you still have the 100 feet of the water and then the parkland along the street as opposed to stacking them.
Yeah, but if, if you've got the, the parkland, if it was, let's say we did it at the wetlands edge, you've got that, whatever the length is of 100 feet of essentially parkland, but not really. And then you've got the true parkland just in the landward of it. So you've, you've basically dedicated twice the parkland that you need.
Essentially, it's sort of like it's, it's using either the vegetative buffer and double, double counting it, both as parkland and this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. As doing the setback that's required from the front of the street, you basically could use part of that setback as part of your 10%.
Well, no, because the setback would start after it.
After, okay.
Yeah, so you would come in the parkland area and then your, what, 50-foot setback would start.
From the park.
Yeah, right, exactly. It would be.
Yeah, that seems.
And then, so then it's just, can we do a driveway across the parkland?
Yeah. I think it's just multiple parklands.
You know what they did in Cobbitt's Lane, the entrance to like Cockle's Place? The first 100 feet, you can't build on, you gotta keep it natural for life.
That's a, yeah.
I think that's it.
That was a vista for, that would be nice on Nostrum with the big trees there, especially in that area.
If you don't, if you don't ruin that. Yeah. You don't ruin that beautiful, the canopy. The canopy, yeah. Yeah, if they could push all the impact inward, 100 feet, 150 feet. That would be great. And there's plenty of depth. You got plenty of room, yes. 500 feet deep, you know, from the road to the water, so there's plenty of room to do that. Would we really require them to, a parkland if they have a covenant in the deeds, where they've got to keep it natural except for the driveway entrance? Well, that would be the parkland. It would, it would be one in the same.
Yeah.
But I guess what Matt was saying is we have little sections along the driveways and then we're creating flag lots, unless the, each frontage was the 160 that you need, 160 for the AA zone.
Well, no, it'd only go, you know, the driveway would only go 100 feet past that and then it's not, you know, it's not a little flag lot, it's for each individual.
But it's not, but it's no longer frontage, so I see, I see the challenge from a code perspective.
I guess they gotta bring, I'll bring something in on paper that you.
Beth and Joe.
Public hearing. We're, we're in the final stages of coming up with what I think would qualify as a sketch plan and we'll bring it into you guys.
Yeah, that's good.
Beth and Joe, do you have any ideas? I'm sure you didn't ponder this, right?
It's a good time to ask.
Yeah.
Just before last call.